Good evening. It is now 7:01, Wednesday, June 24. We will call the meeting to order President, Commissioner Hoffmeyer, Commissioner Singleton, and Commissioner Merrill. First order of business, are any agenda changes?
Yep.
What you got?
All right. Buckle up. A lot of them are easy, but let's see. In terms of unfinished business, I just wanted to review the telecom issues that we heard about last month. I don't know, you weren't here last month, right? But the telecom issues. Let's see. The Commissioner five position, or are we doing that in board issues?
That should be in board issues, why the Commissioner five position?
Okay. All right, thank you, sorry.
No?
Let's see. The unfinished business, the pool schedule?
Pool schedule?
Mm-hmm. Update on silver sneakers, which we approved last month.
On silver sneakers?
And then, new business, program development? And that is actually all. Oh, no, no, actually, an insurance update.
Should we put that under new business?
I don't know. You, dealer's choice.
We'll put that under new business right now.
Okay. And then, actually, sorry, the one thing I forgot, which would be unfinished business, was just a, I guess, financial review update in terms of reconciliation, call it whatever you want, reconciliation.
Financial review update, gotcha, financial review update.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, and that will be, I think most were fast.
All right. Steve, anything?
I would like to also bring the program development, bring something up some, so we're fine.
Okay, so no additional changes. So for the minutes, the changes to the agenda were boarded, under board issues, we added the Commissioner five position, under unfinished business, we added the telecom issue, the pool schedule, update on silver sneakers, and a financial review update. Under new business, we added program development and insurance update.
Thank you.
No further agenda changes. Moving on to public comment, did anybody sign up for public? Did you want to?
Oh, I haven't signed up, but...
You don't need to.
Thanks, the same old issue, the pool temperature. It's, it, the other day, it was absolutely wonderful, and everybody was calling. It is so cold, people simply won't come. I go over to people over and over again, who say, what's the temperature, what's the temperature? And the consensus is, oh, I'm going to come, it's too cold.
Okay.
It is too cold. We've been talking about it now for three years. It's too cold, it's not fair. The people, so many groups of people need to use the pool for all sorts of reasons, for, you know, all the reasons, there are millions of them. It's too cold. I heard today, the two instructors have canceled their houses because their children get too cold, that all people get too cold, the median people get too cold, it's too cold. This morning, it was 80. And I was moving like meh, and my fingertips all turned white. It's not fair. I don't know what we can do about it.
I believe we are actually going to take some action tonight to fix, to start to rectify the problem that will help us moderate the pool temperature on a consistent basis so we don't have like that 84 to 80 fluctuation.
We don't need 84, we need consistently 83, 83 might be wonderful. And I reckon that is a temperature which everybody can be accommodated. The lapses aren't going to die, the tins, sewers aren't going to swell up instead, the bodies aren't going to freeze out cold. 83 should be good for everybody.
Well, I know there's something on there, like I said, I can't speak for everybody, but I know there is something on there tonight to help us regulate the temperature. And hopefully, once we start to do that, once we start to do that, then we can move forward with maybe a consensus to, finally, once we have a consistent temperature, we can move forward to rectifying the problem more.
And then, if consistently it can be 83, people like me could go out back into the community and say, hey, the pool's wonderful, it's terrific again, come back, give it a go. You know, come back for you and see. When I left the pool this morning at quarter to 12, there were, a little bit before that, before the end of class, there were only four people, including the instructor, this son, and one lapses in the water. The pool should be chock full of people. If it was, both in and out at the same time of day, there'd be 50. And they're keeping 50 people, they're keeping their pool consistently at 84. It never goes below 83, but generally, it's 84. They have the hottest showers you've ever been in, it is spotlessly claimed.
Well, not always. Yeah. I was just saying the other day, that the guys were out there, and there was feces on the wall. So, things do happen.
Things happen.
Yes, they do.
Life would be all wrong to deny you that, things do happen. Indeed, they do. But if we can, we should have a lot of people here.
We agree with you.
Can I ask you, Sean?
Yes, sir.
Because we have been talking about this for two years, and I know, I understand what you're saying about, you know, getting into where it is a consistent temperature. What would we need to do if we decide as a board, not only do we want it to be consistent, but we want it to be consistently 83? That that is our goal. Right now, I mean, that we want it to be consistently 81, I think is what we have up there, right? Is it 81 or 82?
I thought it was 82.
82, we can't even maintain, yeah, we can't even maintain 82. So, I mean, we can always make a motion to say, hey, let's make it this temperature. My suggestion is, right now, we get something that makes it one temperature all the time, and then let's definitely address the temperature issue. Because the worst thing to do is to say, hey, we're going to keep it at this temperature, and we can't, which is where we're at right now.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, please, sir.
You can do it at a different time if you want. But so, if we say we're going to get it at a consistent temperature, what we're shooting for is consistently 82, correct?
Currently, yes.
Yes. So, what would we need to do if I wanted to make a motion to consistently?
You would need to bring that up under new business.
Okay, I would like to bring that up under new business, whether it's this month or next month. However, how you would like to do it, sir?
I'll leave that up to you.
I would like to do it tonight.
Okay, we'll put it under new business.
Thank you.
Pool temperature, under new business.
Got it, thank you.
That will be a wonderful event, if we can do that.
Anything else?
If I, yes, if I can say so.
Yes, ma'am.
This is, this is a major breakthrough. Your position of, we'll try to do this, and we'll try to do that, and we'll attempt to get it to heaven, on and on and on for two years, that I've been, I'm getting on without It's wonderful to think that it's finally going to be resolved, and we can get 83.
We hope to get it resolved. I would, I would hate to say we're going to promise you something that we can't follow through on.
There's going to be discussion, sorry.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, so, yeah, I don't want to lie to you and say it's going to be resolved, but I think, you know, it's on the agenda, so.
Wonderful.
Anything else?
No.
All right. Any further, well, there's no other public, Cecil, you're still public, do you have anything you want to, no? All right, so we'll finish with public comments. The next thing on the agenda is the kayaks. We have remaining kayaks to be sold. I don't think we have to go through the whole process of determining them surplus, just to set a date that they go out for bid again, correct? So, we need to give a 10-day notice for them to go out to bid. Don't want to turn on my Alan Jackson radio, that would be bad.
I agree, for different reasons.
How many kayaks are left?
Nobody asked.
We sold...
Seven.
Seven.
We sold seven, we have five left.
Five left, you know, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
More than half.
So, I have to ask this question. Every time that we go out like this, how much is that costing the district for us to repost this?
With the advertisements, we were in about $500 with all of the advertising.
Okay, so, is it going to cost us that again?
No, because it's going to be a much shorter list.
Okay, so are we looking at?
Probably half that.
Okay, because they have to, they make him a point to where it's, what do we do if we get to the point to where it's not cost-effective to continue to do that? What do we do with the kayaks then?
We're going to have to ask Nathan, but I'm pretty sure if we don't declare, we've already declared them surplus.
Okay.
And if there's surplus, and we can't get rid of them, then the next thing to do is to send them either to recycling center or to trash.
I was just curious.
Yeah, so...
Thank you for clarifying that.
That's not definitive, as I haven't checked with Nathan, but, so, the thing we would need to do, if we agree on it, is to put them out for another round of bidding, the five, or the other left, and we have to give a 10-day notice.
Okay.
So, what I'm looking for...
I know, kind of, just hang on.
It's my calendar for everybody that's smarter. 10 days from now will be the last, that's Marine Corps math.
It's Marine Corps math if today was July 1st.
That's the wrong month. There you go.
That was...
There you go.
That was pretty hard, sir.
It made sense to me. For some reason, it was circled.
Fine, I am going to make a motion for June 34th, if it makes you feel better. No, I was trying to figure out, okay, so we go, so 10 days...
Can I stab you with a pen?
Can you get this apple nonsense to go to the next month, please? Thank you.
Did you say apple nonsense?
Absolutely.
See how easy that was?
Now, remember that it does have to go into the paper, so it would be, you know, whenever we, it has to be 10 days from when it goes out in the paper.
10 days from when it goes out in the paper, so you can make it.
Okay, so, sorry, I'm just trying to, since we did this several months ago, I'm trying to understand, so the 10 days is the notice before which it will, auction will begin, or the 10 days is the 10 days of the actual?
We have to give a minimum of 10 days.
We have to give a minimum of 10 days of when the auction will begin, and then an additional 10 days from when the bids will be opened. All right, so, let's see, Mr. Chair, I move that we proceed with advertising and giving notice regarding the five remaining kayaks to, the auction of the five remaining kayak, surplus kayaks, to begin Friday, July 10th, through... Thursday, July 30th?
Through a motion that we make a, put it, put out for bid, the five surplus kayaks, beginning Friday, 10th of July, through Thursday, 30th of July. Do I have a second?
A second, if...
All right, discussion?
Erica, does that work?
It would work. On the 30th of July, you would need to call a special meeting, and that's when you choose to open them.
Okay.
Great, that was the point, yeah, that was the point, is it's not our regular meeting day, but we can't meet that day.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Could we, could we just add to the verbiage, I mean, so our expectation, if they don't sell, is, are we going to, so, we can do one of two things if they don't sell. We can either determine other avenues, or if we actually put verbiage, I would, I would make the assumption that if we put verbiage into the advertisement that says, any unsold kayaks will go back on auction starting the 31st until such period, or whatever. I mean, can we make it conditional such that we don't have to do this whole process again?
You do have to do the last bit of it every single time that you go forth. You don't have to start at the very, very beginning again with the kayaks, because they've already been declared surplus. You do have to do the notice to of intent to sell and the bidding process.
But we, but we will have already done an intent to sell.
Yes.
I mean, we've, and technically, we already have, and if we, if we made it open-ended, it basically says, we're going to do it for another 21 days until, until such time as they are sold, effectively. I mean, so basically, here's the new, anything not sold, I, I think we're, I think we're trying so hard to make sure we follow the process, that I think we're overdoing it a little bit. Yeah, I think we're, I think we're tying our own hands a little bit. And so I just wonder if that's something that we could ensure that we include verbiage. Or if we don't feel comfortable doing that, then I would make a suggestion, you know, with Steve, that, you know, agree with Steve in terms of, then what do we do? And I honestly would, we literally spent thousands of dollars to get this process. I just would, I feel like we probably don't need to, in this particular case, run to the lawyer again and spend another $500 to figure out what we're supposed to do with them, because then your point is exactly true, right?
It's not cost-effective.
At that point, we're, I think we're done.
Yeah.
At which point, I mean, there are a couple of options, from what I understand. One of them would be to have them still a surplus, and then re, relook at selling them at a better time, which would possibly be in the spring, provided they don't sell. And the other one, and just as an aside to that, I do have a list of interested parties. So, they're, they just need to wait until we give a bidding timeframe again.
I'm not sure, I guess I'm not sure how that's different from the regular process, though. I mean, they would have to fall into the regular process.
They would have to fall into the regular process, and it's just that, when we do put the notices out, that they will be contacted.
Okay.
So that we will hopefully get, be able to get rid of most, if not all.
And I think what I'm, what I'm just trying to suggest is the easiest path to, of contingency, should they not, that's all.
Okay, so, would it be, say, say we don't sell these kayaks, okay? Instead of going through this process again, scrapping them is like, no.
Yeah.
That's, can we donate? I mean, if there was some youth program out there somewhere?
I don't think we can donate taxpayers' dollars.
Can?
We cannot donate taxpayer dollars.
I thought I'd ask.
We can put them back into inventory.
Okay.
That would, that would be a possibility as well.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Further discussion? Amendments to the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Board issues, Commissioner five position. We have an open Commissioner position. We received one application for it. Cecil's here tonight, he's running for position two during the, during the election in November. I did talk to Richard Fort, who is running for Commissioner five, and he had told me that he would like to wait. He is, he wants to get prepared, and he wants to wait, so, because I know that was a concern you brought up at the last meeting. So, without violating confidence, I did talk to Richard, and he totally, he appreciates that. And he said, he's not ready. He goes, he wants the next couple of months to make sure he's totally prepared to step in. So, with Richard's blessing, we only have one application, and that's Mr. Pierce. So, do we have any discussion or questions for Cecil?
I'll be back.
No.
Don't leave.
Too late.
Don't leave. We have your name and your address.
Yes, we do. Discussions, nothing?
Nothing.
Do I have any motions?
Mr. Chair, I move that we appoint Cecil Pierce, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
To the open Commissioner five position.
I will second that.
So I have a motion to appoint Cecil Pierce to Commissioner five position, and a second. Further discussion or questions?
I have, I've had the honor of knowing Cecil for quite some time, and I, I truly believe that he will be an asset to this board, and that is all I have, so...
My only laughter was the fact that Steve said he had nothing to contribute, and then he talked. Observation, sorry, point of observation.
I love you, but...
Further discussion by the Unruly Board?
Oh, you guys, I would like to say I'm going to miss you.
Oh, he already said that. He said that first.
Further discussion about the motion on the table? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, it's too late now to run.
Welcome to the craziness.
Thanks. Next line, everybody.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Minutes approval, we are going to have to wait, our beloved Secretary, Commissioner Holly is on vacation in Hawaii, so we're going to have to table the minutes approval until next month, when she's been back from Hawaii, and we all have deemed it appropriate to speak with her once again.
She's not in South Dakota anymore?
Was she South Dakota? I thought it was Hawaii.
Yeah, see, it changes everything, doesn't it?
Yeah, that does. No, and she was, no, was it? No, don't, don't try to throw me off here. No, no. So we will table minutes approval until July. Any comments about minutes approval? Voucher review, so we're on to voucher review. There we go. You guys changed the lineup on me.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve district vouchers 6697 through 6733 in the amount of $30,227.68, and payroll transfers from MNO to payroll in the amount of $39,475.69.
A second.
We have a motion to approve payroll voucher 66976733 for $30,227.68 in payroll in MNO account of $39,475.69. Seconded, discussion.
Probably just...
Yes, ma'am.
Reviewing.
Real quick, question, it's number 6720, employee security benefit charges, the number 6,157.7, is that?
That is, it's gone. Unemployment insurance.
Okay, that was for the unemployment.
Yes, that is for unemployment.
Are we done with it, or is it ongoing?
It is ongoing, unfortunately.
Okay.
It is ongoing.
There were two names on there. Who was the second name? What, what, what position did they hold there at the pool?
The second name was a janitorial person.
Okay.
Can somebody explain to me, because I know I asked this question, and we never got a good answer from the state? These people left, they, we paid them unemployment. They then found gainful employment elsewhere, left that job, and now we're paying unemployment again. Did we ever get an answer from the state why we are paying unemployment again?
No, but we have the email from Maurice King, from...
May I see it?
From MRC.
I would love to read it.
It was an explanation of why, why we have...
Excellent. We'll read it in a minute, since I asked the question, so thank you.
Do you want to read it?
Sure.
Or you want to read it?
No, go for it.
No.
No, go ahead, go ahead, please, sir. Go right ahead.
This email is from Maurice King to the Director of the North movie parking lot, and it was dated April 23, 2015. Hello, Erica, in case you find this useful, I wrote an explanation of my response for our internal records. reimbursable employees are a class that includes municipalities who, instead of paying unemployment insurance, only compensate the employment security department for former employees' benefits as they are paid out. There are two scenarios under which a RE may owe the ESD for benefits paid to an employee who was terminated for cause. In the first scenario, the employee worked exclusively for the RE during the base year. That determines the amount of the benefit to which the employee may be entitled. The base year is usually the four quarters preceding the date of termination. Occasionally, workers file for unemployment benefits, which are promptly paid out, only to be determined ineligible at a later date. When this happens, the RE is still obligated to pay those benefits, but the employee is also obligated to repay them. If and when the ESD receives repayment, the municipality is paid back. In the second scenario, the employee works for multiple employers during the base year. When the benefits are paid properly or not, each employer is charged on a pro-rate basis. Moreover, each employee is charged regardless of whether they terminated the employee for cause. Thus, an employee may be terminated for cause by one RE, which ordinarily would make them ineligible for benefits, but then go on and work for another employee only to be terminated in such a way that they are eligible for benefits. Because the RE was an employer during that employee's base year, they must pay a share of those benefits. If benefits are paid, and the employee is later determined to be ineligible for those benefits, the RE would be recompensed in the same manner described above. Please feel free to contact me if you have any further questions. Best regards, Maurice King, legal consultant with MRC.
So basically, we pay out even if the employee is deemed ineligible, and then the employee has to pay us back?
Yes.
So the employee that's unemployed is going to pay us back?
Not us, but the state.
The state.
State, who then reimburses.
Even when they pay, is when we get reimbursed.
Right, but if you charge somebody that doesn't have a job to get reimbursed, they're not going to get their money back, which in turn means we're not going to get our money back, which means we're left holding the bank. Okay.
Or if they gain employment, they haven't paid us back, they will garnish the wages, as I understand as well.
Cool. That answers my question.
Thank you for explaining that. I remember reading that, it was in an email to us.
It was.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It confused me then also, yes.
Question about 6725, the foam team apparel, is that then a pass-through? Are, are we realizing the reimbursement for that immediately?
Yes.
Okay.
That's swim caps and...
Well, not, probably not from Baby U embroidery.
No, it's a...
True.
Team sweatshirts and T-shirts and stuff like that, which the parents are paying for as they pick them up, yes.
Gotcha.
And I believe all orders have been collected.
It was just too good to pass up, I know, it's just way too much fun.
Lob and softballs.
I just have a question about $117 of colored paper. Perhaps I'm not understanding something, but it feels rather excessive. What did we, what did, what did we, what do we need $110 worth of colored paper for?
Brochures that we used for Holland Happening and for other, we have another event coming up this weekend, where we are going to be handing out information and brochures to the public.
Okay, but that's like multiple thousands of pages.
It's five thousand, geez.
Okay.
We handed out about 3,500 during the Holland Happening Parade, and the others are going to be handed out this weekend.
We handed out during the parade?
We handed them out during the parade and at our booth.
Okay. Have we noticed any benefit from that? I just, I realize it's a small expense, but it's, that's a lot of colored paper.
Yes, we have.
Okay, it'd be great if we had any way to track stuff like that, just, because to me, again, if I, if, I was going to say, if I wasn't on the board, I would question. I am on the board, and I'm questioning. It would just, it would be good to understand, because that's a lot of colored paper. And, and I don't know if we're going to have a, an expense like that again on a regular basis.
We're probably going to do the July 4th parade, or...
Not at this time.
Not at this time, okay.
So what's the other event, then?
We have an expo over at the Navy Base this weekend.
So the Open House?
The Open House, yeah, we're gonna be over there.
That paper also gets used for the stuff that we take to Chamber for like the walking packets. So it'll probably last us the rest of the year and close to it, we hope.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, no further questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, Director's Search, unfinished business. All right, so last month, we voted on offering Ricardo Frayitas a job. Unfortunately, we could not come to terms with Ricardo, so we need to decide what the next step is now. So...
I will start with, Mr. Chair, I move that we re-advertise the Director position beginning, well, actually, beginning, where are we at Thursday? Next week through the end of July.
Let's take the discussion and second then.
Well, that's the whole point.
Yes.
Seconded by Steve. Discussion.
You know, the problem I have going forward right now is to, it took us five months to go through this process. We had 13 or 14 people. I went through this process before we had 13 or 14 people, and I don't know. It may be time to redefine like what we're really looking for here, because where we ran into a problem, it really came down to salary, if I understand. Do we, do we, are we going to be in this position to where to get the person that we feel is qualified, to where we have to be able to pay more money? But to do that, how do you do that with the budget we have unless, and nobody likes to hear this, unless you look at combining duties? Because that is the only way you could ever offer to pay more. Or do we just realize that maybe that person out there that we feel has those qualifications that where we may not get that person? I mean, when you look at the disparity between where we are and where a qualified person may be, I just don't know how we get there. And I really question opening it back up without really redefining what we're looking for.
And I think there are two possibilities there. I think one of them is, so I think we have to accept that there will have to be concessions of some sort, whether it's pay, but more than likely in a district where we don't have any money, that might not be the right one. Or skills, and then we have to determine what we're willing to accept.
Yeah.
So is, so for example, is it more important to have somebody who has an aquatics background or a pool background or a park and rec background, or is it more important to have somebody who has a business background, for example?
Oh, I agree.
As it, I think the other, I think the other component to consider is where and how we advertise. And so perhaps there is also some exploration into other avenues outside of what our bylaws dictate we need to do, right? That's why we advertise where we did.
Yes.
And so we may want to take a different approach because we didn't get the results that we were looking for. And I personally would say, I would look at doing both. I wouldn't, I think the other thing is that I think we have to probably, I think a lot of effort was spent and I feel like we probably could have headed off a little bit at the pass if we had published a salary range. I feel like that probably needs to be part of the posting.
Yes.
So...
I also...
Yeah, go ahead, sorry, sorry, please.
I was gonna say, we've talked about redefining searches, redefining positions and looking at the bylaws. Those are all some big things.
Yeah.
And I hate to throw this out there, but I think what we need to do, because I hate using this, is, and the only reason I hate it is because I'm delegating work, but I think we need to have a search committee or a subcommittee to actually look at everything we're gonna need to do and report back to us in July. And the reason I say that is because we're looking at the PD, we're looking at our bylaws, which we have to vote to change as a group, and we're looking at the future of the district and a levy here, which is very important. So I think right now I'm more inclined to appoint two people to look at that and to review all those things, all those issues, and get back to us. I would also say to that subcommittee, I'd like them also to look at, you know, options as far as that PD goes, something like Port Angeles or Port Townsend. They actually have a part-time director. I don't know if that's the answer for us. I really don't. But I know there's many different options out there, and we need to look at everything right now. And it's very crucial that we get this correctly, because as we know, not only are we going forward in the district and trying to rebound from, you know, a rocky past with our directors recently, but we're also looking at setting the stage for success in the future. And that goes with our levy, with our district as a whole, with our employees. So I think it's crucial that maybe we appoint some folks to look into that before we try to make any movement forward.
We already have a subcommittee, don't we? We have a Director's Search Subcommittee.
We do have a Director's Search Subcommittee. You're correct.
So you don't need to...
I do not need to appoint them, but I can give them a new task.
I would recommend that you give me from, I've been involved in this process twice now, and I really would like somebody that maybe looks at it just a little bit differently.
All right.
You know, and whether that's...
I think I have just the person.
Okay.
All right.
Can you do that, though?
We have a... Yeah, I have to wait until it's approved by the county, so I will word that correctly.
Okay.
However, we do have a motion on the table. The current motion on the table is to re-advertise the Director's Position next week through the end of July the 2nd. Further discussion on that motion. All in favor? All against?
Aye.
Motion fails unanimously, therefore, I, as the Chair, will appoint a subcommittee, the Director's Search Subcommittee, to look into a better way forward, how it affects the PD, how it will affect our policy.
PD meaning?
Position description, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, that's okay. I was like, I was making stuff up.
Yeah, the policy and also alternatives for the district. The current Subcommittee is Commissioner Singleton and Commissioner, no, it's Commissioner Holly and Commissioner Hoffmeyer.
I'll stand until you can...
I would like to continue with that current...
Yes.
Subcommittee until further changes could be made.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir, you may.
So when we look at the current situation with Erica Miller being the interim Director, just continues, should we ask Erica?
Erica?
Well, I think, I think we actually have to look back at the motion.
Because what I would like to do is...
Yeah, we do.
We do.
What was the original motion?
I think it was 3/16, but I could be wrong. I believe that was my wording.
So let's, can you please research the original motion and let us know what it is next month at July, because that'll give us six months at the latest? And then we can take a look at if we need to make a new motion or if we'd like to make changes. To appoint you as the interim Director. Okay, can you check and verify? Thank you.
Aye.
Further discussion?
Just checking my mind, trying to figure out how long the process is gonna take, that's all.
Okay, okay.
I'm just looking for stability.
Yes.
That's the big thing.
And the answer is if there's a bylaws change, at least another month, just to begin the process.
No, that's, we're in discussion, that's fine. All right, any further discussion on the failed motion before we move on? All right, the next thing is the budget. We have the 215, 214 budget in front of us. We're looking at the 200, 2,200, gee, many Christmas, I really need a cup of coffee. 2015 budget. Is it assault?
Erica, do you have a copy of the one you just sent?
I couldn't quite hear you.
Do you have a copy of the budget?
Is she in your package?
Is it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Did you buy a copy?
Thank you.
I did, yeah, and yeah, and the previous one that we did and...
Thank you.
Okay. So we're gonna start looking at the budget revision for 2015. This is an ongoing issue. So we asked for some changes and I'll turn the budget preparation and what we see in front of us over to interim Director Erica Miller.
What, some of the changes that we had talked about the last meeting have been made. They are noted in the column. Next to it, in that blank column, there is a star and then the original number that it was changed from, and the number that it was changed to is put in place.
So I have to ask you, we lowered NWAAC to 32.
We did. That was based on looking at the dues paid out so far.
Okay, okay.
And does that include charging for August?
No, it does not.
Is there a reason why it doesn't?
I think because honestly, that department head was very resistant to doing it simply because in every other swim team, they don't charge for August. It is an 11-month sport. They take off three weeks in August and they take off one week around Christmas time.
They take off two weeks in August, is what you said?
Three.
Three.
Usually three weeks in August and then one week around...
Well, it's gonna take off three weeks in August, that makes sense, yeah.
And that's pretty much the sport of swimming all around. Other research on other clubs shows about the same activity.
So he's planning on taking off three weeks in August?
Correct.
Okay, last three weeks of August?
Correct.
Okay. Can I, can I bring up one thing on NWAAC that kind of came to me this week on travel expenses? What are the travel expenses again? Were they $3,000 for the year?
I believe that we have made an adjustment to that.
Can we go through this in order, though?
Well, we were talking about NWAAC and I just wanted to jump to NWAAC because, however you wanna do it.
Okay, then just go, but I just...
$4,300, this is what we had revised.
It's tied to NWAAC is why I'm bringing it up now.
I understand.
A thought came to me the other day, and I just kinda wonder what you guys think about this. If you have 50 kids on the team and they pay $5 every month, that is strictly that $5 is for travel expenses, period.
I'm sorry.
That's right. If every kid on, if you have 50 kids on the swim team and they're paying $5 a month, that $5 a month is for nothing more than travel expenses, and it basically goes into this pool. That is $3,000 on the year. When that travel money is gone, it is gone. And the coach can feel free to use that travel expense money any way he sees fit for whatever swim meets he wants to go to, but when the money's gone, the money's gone. And I don't think that, I don't feel most parents would be concerned if you thought, okay, this $5 is for travel expenses, because every other sport in town, whether it's select soccer, you know, baseball, whatever, you know, you're paying when you travel. You're paying on your own. And I think that the least that we can do is, you know, is to really look at that travel expense money. The taxpayer cannot pay for that travel expense money. And I don't know how we could add that $5 to the dues, you know, and then pull it aside. And I mean, it would be paperwork that you all would have to take care of, but to where every kid, no matter whether you're on bronze to senior, you're paying that $5 and that's going because every kid that goes to swim meets, they're using the coach, so. So we'd be raising the NWAAC dues $5 per child.
That, and not to cut you off, but that is also part of program review, which was also on here tonight, so let me ask a question. Is this something we're going to talk about during program review also?
No.
No.
It is something that, I mean, when we discuss changing the fee schedule, that's where it would come in, but it wouldn't be something, I mean, we're not prepared to talk about that right now.
Not prepared to talk about it yet, however, however, that would be something we'd have to change for the future.
Okay.
Good point, good point.
Thank you.
During budget discussion?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So going through this from top to bottom, let's look at our revenues real quick. Questions on revenues, comments on the changes that we've made?
Yep, the Masters, I think I'm still, so I've kind of rethought about that yet again, and I think, I mean, 3,500 still seems ambitious. Because that would effectively, that would be 70 months, which would be six, six full-time swimmers, but we're halfway through the year, and how many do we have paying for Masters? I thought we had like two or three.
We have two annually.
Right.
And then we have one that's supposed to be a monthly payer. So I think that considers about three that are...
Okay.
I might be in the same one, but off the top of my head, I'd say there's four.
So there's...
Given based on what we have, I mean, it would feel, so I had, I had adjusted it in my own little math here. I had adjusted it to 2,000, but it sounds like we could probably half that number, conservatively. The thing about the punch cards is they could never purchase them again. It's not, I mean, I realize people could also quit, but they could last all year, the punch cards, right?
One thing that happens is the two people that pay annually, they pay in last fall, so we're not gonna see any money in that for this budget, but you know, probably this fall, they'll pay again.
They'll pay again, okay. No, that's fair.
So...
Well, the Masters has taken almost $1,200.
So we're gonna, we're gonna look in 1,200 through May, so what are we gonna look at making that through the end of the year? 2,400?
Well, if you have, let's see...
We took 1,200 through May, and then we have June, July, August, September, October, November, December.
Well, but if they're not, I mean, it sounds like you can't necessarily extrapolate that based on...
It's difficult, yeah. You have one member that if he decides to come to swim for a month, he pays. If he decides he's sick or busy for two or three months, he doesn't, and then he's back and he pays again.
Okay, so 2,500, sure.
So let's change the Masters to 2,500. All right. Some other revenue questions?
It looks like we up concessions again. I had 1,205 on here and it shows 13.
We've come to a little bit, just kind of looking at the numbers, and I've noticed an increase in the number of concessions that our military families are buying now that they don't want to pay for admission, so that's, it's a hope, it's what we're shooting for.
Okay, okay, I just, I'm, I'm trying to line item reconcile here, because I think that personally, that's the only way I can do it.
And that makes sense.
I, on miscellaneous revenue surplus kayaks, 3,175 represents the amount we've already collected. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay, so I up that number to 5,000 because I feel like, I mean, we can assume that we're gonna get something for them. That's our expectation.
Sounds good to me. All right, so any other questions or comments on our revenue?
Nope.
So that'll change our revenue to... I'm not even gonna try, I'm gonna let you do the math here for me.
Yes, if I did this correctly, it would be 9,63676.
I have to ask you, where did you get the $5,000 and how did you come to that? Cause when we start looking at how they're coming up with their numbers, we have to also go to come up with numbers. 3,175 to 5,000, how did you figure that?
The other five?
If you would like to, yeah.
Well, I, I would like to, like to know.
The other five?
The, the other five. I mean, say, I mean.
If you have a different number, feel free.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I mean, we're just throwing numbers out there at this point, I just kinda wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Actually, actually, we're not, but.
We kinda did with that.
Okay, if you, if you'd like something else, please feel free to propose it.
No, I'm just, just, it's kind of, it's kind of a strange little thing going on, that's all.
I, I'm afraid I don't understand what the problem is. I, I'm trying to.
Okay, so how many kayaks, there's five of them.
Right.
Right.
And how much are they going to sell for?
Well, if we do the same thing as we did before, where, where three of the five, or I think four of the five have a minimum of $400 on them, then that would be 1,600, plus at least 100 for the other one, which would be 1,700.
That's if they all sell, right?
Yes.
And that may be very ambitious considering that only five of the nine sold before. So we may be a little over ambitious to think that all, all five, or, you're right, seven of the 12, seven, seven of the 12 sold. So, so say only three of them sold.
Let me ask this, how many people do we have that have mentioned that they're interested? Six, we have five kayaks, six people are interested. So I think it's safe to say that we're gonna sell all five.
Hope you're right.
Me too.
There you go.
Hope we're right on.
If you'd like to propose, oh, sorry, if you'd like to propose another member, though, please feel free.
I just wanna make sure, you know, Wendy, I just wanna make sure if you're throwing a number out, I wanna know what you're thinking, that's all. So don't, don't be, uh, don't, don't hate the fact that I questioned it.
I, I'm not, it's, it's more of the.
Let's go on, Mr. Chair.
No, you know what?
Let's go on.
No, if you get to say what you have to say, then I get to say what I have to say as well. Which is the suggestion that there's something magical or not about what I'm doing.
You really hate to be questioned, don't you?
No, I don't.
Okay, we're gonna call a meeting to order, let's. We had, um, 5,000, we're gonna stick with that on the surplus kayaks, that takes our number to.
We can adjust it down, that's fine, why don't we say 4,500?
We're gonna change it to 4,500?
And so that would take our total revenues to 9,63676.
176, all right.
At least according to my math.
All right. So, looking at expenses. Um, we initially had 53,500 for the director, we've taken that down to 48,250, that was based on, again, remind me, please. So 48,250 was based on another director being hired in July. So if that doesn't happen for the next two months, how will that affect that number?
Uh, both the director and the aquatic director number will go. Yeah, well, the aquatic director number will go down further. The director, this 48,225 is based on what is being paid out currently.
Okay. So the change there would be the aquatic director going down.
That's correct.
So, we, we can pretty much say that it's safe to happen for at least three months, so how much would that drop the aquatic director? And does everybody agree we're not gonna hire a director within the next three months?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's safe to forecast three months, so how much would that bring?
1,260 every two weeks.
Okay, hold on. 1,260 every two weeks. Times two equals 25. Times three equals 7560. So if I take 15,000 minus 7560, I get, oh. That's about right.
Seven.
7,444. So if we drop the aquatic directors to 7,440. 7,440, I'm sorry. That'll be more in line with our current personnel staffing. Cashiers, we're coming down some more, um, more in line with, uh, Joanne and Julie upfront. Head cashiers and admin.
Sorry, how did, what did you adjust, did you, you, did you adjust the director or?
I adjusted the aquatic director downs, because I've, we're not going to hire.
Okay, but only that one, okay, sorry, I'm just trying to keep it out here.
No, that's very, that's very.
Thank you.
It's a question we, we took, I didn't say where I made that change, I apologize. Changed the aquatic director from 15,000 to 7,440. And that's based on the fact that we all agree we probably will not hire a director in the next three months. And as the aquatic director is acting as the interim, that'll save us on the aquatic director. So looking at the rest of expenses for salary and wages, and comments and questions.
Uh, we current, on the current P and L, it says that we have paid assistant coaches $0. I don't think that is accurate, um, sorry if I'm wrong about that, but, oh, did we, wait a second.
Look under debt coach?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Did that clarify?
Um, well, it clarified a little bit, but hold on a second.
Only team administrator, who's just added to the head coach, what does, what do you mean by that?
Head cashier.
Oh, head cashier.
Gotcha, my bad, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, on the, um, assistant or debt coaches, I, I'd actually like to see us reduce that number.
Okay.
Um, I know we've discussed it before, but I, I think, I think hard times call for hard measures.
Yep.
Um, and so I think we, I, I think we need to either go lean or we need to, um, cap the number where we are right now. That, that would be, that's my, that's my opinion.
I have a question, we did have practice this weekend while the team was in Yakima. How, do we have any clue how much we paid out for the debt coach this weekend?
There was no debt coach this weekend, there was a lap swim.
Okay, so there was a lap swim, so we did not pay out for a debt coach this weekend, correct?
We had a lifeguard on duty and we had a lap swim and the swim team kids who wished to come and do a workout had one available to them, but we also opened it up to our public for lap swim to come in.
So there was a lifeguard on duty, no debt coach, correct? Okay, so.
May I ask a question? Didn't the head coach say that he doesn't want an assistant coach for the rest of the year? That's what it said in his staff report.
He said he realizes that there isn't one. Oh, that he, that finances are tight and that he figures that there will probably not be much of a budget, if any at all, to continue with a debt coach for the rest of the year.
All right, so we'll cap the, if we're all in agreeance, we will cap the assistant and debt coaches to 2,917.49, which is what we've paid out year-to-date.
2,000.
Um, so we haven't paid anything this month at all?
No.
She was here Friday afternoon.
Okay.
She did coach Friday afternoon.
She coached Friday afternoon?
Yes.
So do we know how much we paid out Friday afternoon?
Well, she, you know what, she was here Friday morning for our practice, she was here Friday evening for Masters and she was here Friday afternoon for afternoon.
Okay.
So I'm not sure how many hours that is total.
Three, four, five, six, six, I think, six.
Okay, six, six hours at.
$16, hour.
Come on.
So we said.
3,000.
3,015 would be good.
1,749. So if we cap the assistant and debt coaches at 3,013.49, we'd be a hit and nail on the head. All right?
I'm gonna go with 14, I'm just gonna round out.
Okay, let's go to 3,014.
I need, I need a break, I'll be back.
So.
You wanna call the meeting to, to.
Okay, we'll call the meeting for a five-minute recess?
Thank you.
Yeah. Low out record level. Low out filter. No. Um, we're gonna call the meeting back to order at, um, 20, 8:03. Um, real quick, our maintenance supervisor has asked if we take a break in the agenda to, cause he has to come back later on tonight. Um, is there any questions from the commissioners to the maintenance director?
Was there any particular reason, not that I don't love seeing you, but, um, was there any particular reason that you felt that you needed to come or you were just being open and available to us?
Open and available.
Oh, bless your heart.
I do have a question.
I'm down.
I know you are. Um, if we wanted to fix the temperature control.
Yes.
What would that be priced at?
Well, so far, the, uh, everything that we have gotten, if we need, first of all, we need to control the outside air. So we need the program that's for 5,500 to get that.
Do we have a quote for that, that is handy?
Uh, we've, we've had so many, uh, I don't think anything's handy right now.
Okay.
I don't have.
Could you make one available this week through the director to the commissioners via email? Cause we, we, we will need that quote.
Yes.
Do you have one, Erica? Do you have one?
For the, uh, for the software for our system, or was?
I think it was the last one you and I had talked about, 6,500?
Yes.
I need, okay, we'll need to see that quote to the commissioners, please.
If, if it matters, um, at least in, um, the, my simple math budget, sorry, I, I actually added that in.
Okay, good.
Um, we're just, it's like the last line item, um, just to make sure, because we know how important it is.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we'll need that quote so that if we decide as that amount of money, we'll have to say, what the hell was special meeting? And say, yes, spend it. So, please have a quote handy. And if you can get two other quotes, no matter what they are. If we can, then we just need justification to sole source, so we have that for the taxpayers, saying that there's no other vendor that can hit that.
Do we need a special meeting, I'm sorry, Sean?
Um, if we decide to spend that money unless there's a motion made tonight to go ahead with that.
Okay, cause she has signature authority, I have to give $2,000 in her position, so.
Is it 50,000?
Mm-hmm.
But I think our bylaws say anything over 5,000 we're supposed to approve, is that correct?
Oh, I, maybe, I, not, I, not that I recall, but, but if so, I, I.
We'll take a look at that, we'll take a look at that later, cause I can't recall either, but thank you for making that available. All right. Okay, thanks. Um, so let's. Just, what is the system called?
It is the, uh, the actual programming system that runs the out, the pool debt temperature. And since that fluctuates, it fluctuates the water temperature.
What's the name of it? Heat feeling the bucket?
See what?
Is it feeling the bucket?
The other thing we're doing that does the footy, what?
Okay, gotcha. All right, so it's the program, and, and we knew this was coming, cause it's the program that.
It's a program that we have not had in two years.
Right. And, and we don't have software that's compatible with our computers, cause the software that we currently have is so old, it won't talk to the system.
Exactly, well, without the update. And the update, you gotta get new software to put on our computers.
So this 6,500, is that the system including the software?
No, that's just software.
That's just the software.
That's, that's software to get our system we have now up and running.
Okay. Okay. So is that, is there like a yearly fee associated with that software?
Uh, no, it, it lasts a, a period of, uh, what was it, I think it's like three to four years.
Three to four years, normally.
And then after those three to four years, you gotta buy the upgraded software to make your system work. And we have not purchased that software in, I wanna say, yeah, seven years.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions for remaining destructive, first off, thank you very much for coming, thank you very much for staying. Please go home and get some rest, thanks for all you do for our pool.
Thank you.
All right, back to the, um, revenues, nope, I lied to you, back to the expenses. Any other questions or comments on salaries and wages? So we agree salaries, salary and wages at 4,057, 525,000 dollars. Retirement, that was adjusted and corrected, um, any questions on that?
Yes, sir.
Medical insurance.
Isn't the, uh, the retirement for the, the director going to go down there?
Executive director, the retirement should go down, cause we don't have.
Thinking he was gonna possibly start July 1st.
That's correct. How much do we pay monthly for retirement, ladies? So the coach hasn't opted into it and, uh, we don't. At this point. And, so we haven't paid any of the 19, 20 for him for this year?
No, because he has not opted in.
And how much have we paid for the executive director so far this year? Go back to the, none.
No, we didn't have the director anywhere.
So if we took 39, 20, Commissioner Hofmeyer divided that by 12.
What did you say, I'm sorry, I was doing something else.
If we took 39, 20, I can do that. I'm, I'm sorry, I thought that's what you were working on, that's presumptuous. So it's about 326 dollars a month. Times.
If, if he only worked for, he or she, whoever gets hired, only worked for three months a year, and that we pay them at that highest rate that we had determined.
Mm-hmm.
And they paid in the full 7%, you'd be looking at 1,014 dollars, or if they 1,000 dollars.
1,000 for the director?
If, if the director were to hire, only work three, three months this year.
Okay.
So with that said, I mean, it's about 333 dollars a month, so if we figured four months, you know.
So 1,000, so we could drop the executive director to 1,000. And the head coach to. If he paid for three months.
I think we had that figured in, that if he were to start paying July 1st, is that right?
That's correct.
So I don't know that I would touch that, because he's actually started.
So let's, we all okay with changing that to 2,920 then?
Be back.
All right, let's change that to 2,920. Employee medical insurance.
Do we know, just why the adjustment, it went down by 1,000, just curious?
Based on what we've paid so far?
Okay, thanks.
This is gonna sound really pretty here, cause I don't have this working. So, so if a person is hired and they, they get insurance for, I mean, it's, it's paid by the month, right? Yeah? So I mean, so if they get hired and there's three months to go, then they would only be paying, they would only be paying for the three months, right?
Correct.
That's what I thought. I didn't know if it was some weird thing to where, oh, no, you had to pay for the year or something.
Yeah.
I didn't think so, but.
Shall we leave the medical insurance and the sick and vacation pay as is? All right. Moving on to, um, employee of the month. Employee uniforms and travel. Employee uniforms and travel. I'm gonna look at travel again real quick. So we've paid about $1,000 for travel. Oh, $1,023. We know we traveled this month, and we're looking at traveling next month if there's PNS. And I know there are PNS times out there. So if we took that to $2,000, plus short course starts in September. So $2,000 so far, September, and then that's out of seven months.
I've also, we have also put in here the, the option of employees who make runs to the county. Joanne makes a run to the county every week.
I thought we were using the car for the van for that.
She stays clocked in, so that's not...
Oh, she stays clocked in.
Okay, that's right, yeah, I thought we discussed that last month, right. So $2,000 for up to seven months. And then we have four months of short course, and that doesn't count PNS. How many, I don't remember how many short course meets we do, but even if we did one a month...
We're talking right in the fall?
Yeah.
And we usually did one in September.
One in October.
Usually did two in October sometimes.
Yeah.
But one of them is a home meet.
And then at least one in November.
I think there's a Marysville and a December, you think there's a...
So I think...
Four.
That's about right, four. Do you guys still go to Bellingham? Because there used to be a Bellingham one in October.
Yeah, I believe this year we are choosing between Bellingham and Marysville.
Anacortes has one in September.
Yeah.
And you guys have a home meet in September?
We have a home meet in October.
Okay, in October. So you figured if you go to the Anacortes, the Bellingham, or whichever, the Marysville one, and then there's probably another one?
It's about the same.
So, and we can figure that being somewhere around four meets, with no hotel stays in any of those meets, that's just mileage.
Those are just mileage, yeah.
$100 each, because it'll be low for Anacortes, but... I mean, high for Anacortes, but low for Bellingham.
Marysville meets? Yeah, they're about about $120.
$120 for Marysville?
I think that's what we counted, I imagine, roughly.
And do you remember what we paid for Anacortes?
Less than $100.
Yeah, sure.
May I ask a question, and I don't want to seem rude? How did you come up with this number to begin with?
Just taking the amount of meets that we had gone to and kind of averaging out with the miles, taking, of course, the FBI mileage, federal mileage.
Were you comfortable with this number?
Yeah, I don't know that we'll use all, we'd also looked into the possibility of other employees that might need mileage as well. If we had hired an executive director, that they needed to travel around at all.
If we made that $2,500?
Well, we have four meets in the fall, I said.
Approximately four.
And then there's the meet you guys just got back from, and two more in July that aren't in the 9/7 week already, so really, you're looking at seven more meets.
So $4,300 is probably a safe number. Okay, good.
Possibly.
Yeah, I think, again, I would feel comfortable if we shaved some off of that, but... Perhaps I am missing something, but...
Seems fine.
Should we take it down to $4,000? Or would you like to propose another?
$4,000, so.
Let's go to four. Payroll taxes, processing and unemployment, that's not going to change. Is that including what we just paid out? That is what we just paid out in this month's vouchers, that's correct? And, okay, thank you. Questions on payroll? Taxes and insurance?
On the insurance, are we just assuming what we're paying now? Okay, yeah.
To back up to payroll, please.
Yes, sir.
The $6,200 for unemployment, the unemployment, right? Do we know if we're going to pay more?
We don't.
We don't do it.
We don't.
And there's no way to forecast it?
That's what I'm saying.
There's no way to forecast it, there really isn't.
So, okay, thank you, that's enough.
Do we, it's a legitimate concern, it's a good question. Do we want to put more in unemployment just in case we get hit again?
Probably not a bad idea.
And what's a number that we feel safe, we could, I'd hate to say June's over with?
Are we allowed to mention names? The former head coach that we're paying, has this individual been getting unemployment the entire year?
I think so.
Okay.
I believe so.
Okay. And the other individual, have they been getting it the entire year as well?
No.
Okay.
Do you want to double it?
Well, I mean, the reason I ask that is, I would like to know how long we would have to pay for the former head coach? Because this individual now has been gone for almost a year. It'll be a year this coming August, I believe. And I don't know when unemployment insurance started, if it was like maybe, did it happen in September, October?
November.
Is it one year? I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
When I asked them that question, they referred me back to the letter.
Okay. Wow.
And that, actually, did you talk to somebody and they got hostile with you?
Yes, both of us.
Okay.
They got very hostile.
Shall we make that number 10, or should we take that to 12? What do you guys feel comfortable with? To be safe, to protect the district and the taxpayers?
I would double it, I mean, I would double it just based on...
$12,400. To be on the safe side and protect the taxpayers, we're gonna double unemployment from $6,200 to $12,400? Any further questions or comments?
No, I, it's a dead-end shame, though, that nobody can tell you how long a person can stay alone. Because how are you supposed to figure it out, you know? Because, I mean, if it is one year, I mean, and you're only looking at three months maybe for one employee, and nine months for one of the other, or whatever the case, it's just a dead-end shame.
We agree. Joanne and I have both tried to get this message.
Are we going to 12, 4?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, 12, 4? And then WG, we had no questions on tax and insurance. I'm gonna wait until you're caught up, are you ready?
Yeah, no, I'm good, yeah, thank you.
Professional services, pest control. We took that down a little, but we agreed we couldn't take that down any much, a whole lot more. Any questions during professional, in professional services as a whole?
From that HVAC, PMS, whatever that is?
Preventative maintenance.
Okay.
Preventative maintenance, and that's like having the ducts cleaned and that type of thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, so we had an expense from Baron Heating for $615. Is that, I mean, are those, are those correlated? Reason being, if they are, then we need to bump that number up. Right, that would, I think that's the same thing, right?
No, that was HVAC.
What's that?
The one from Baron Heating last month, was that HVAC?
Um, no.
I think that was...
That was for...
Matt had to run away just now.
I mean, it's set on the voucher, sorry, I'm just...
It is on the voucher?
Yeah, full maintenance per contract.
Let's change it, number to $615.
Is that, so is that an annual thing then?
I believe so.
Okay, we'll go for it.
Let's move the $500 to $615 on the professional services for HVAC, PMS. Legal, we paid $5,000. Do we expect that to go higher? That's, it's a tough one.
You never know. I think that...
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Negotiate a contract between now and the end of the year, that's a good point.
So we're at $3,352 through end of May.
As long as you use the existing contract, Nathan said it would be much cheaper.
That's, that's true.
Because that's where we ran on our problems last time.
That's a good point. So I think $5,000 is probably a safe guess, though. Wendy?
Sounds good.
Okay. Porta potty, we know that's a firm figure now, no pun intended. Advertising?
We did put the advertising up to the $2,000 from the original because of the kayak.
Because of the kayak, we raised the advertising, very good. And if we added another round of advertising for directors, how much would that cost?
Oh, it's another $500, probably.
We got much better, I got better deals.
Oh, did you get, we get a better, it was like $300?
I did get better deals, because these times was actually fairly expensive when I called them directly, I'll say $60 or $70. So we just did a little tiny add in there, and then, I don't remember, I think it was $3 something for the other bit. But you got one thing in print, and then somebody goes online.
And then I know there is the, we have to do the kayak round, again, we may need to look that up.
So you got maybe $500ish by the time you add all the bits.
So if we did $2,500 for advertising? How would you guys feel about that?
Sure, sorry, here, so is internet, does that reflect what our current, I mean, does that reflect what you guys are talking about? I'm just looking at the P and L. And current advertising only has $45, and internet has $830.
Internet is our...
Internet.
Internet.
Okay, so then where is the advert, where are the actual advertising expenses?
You will have to concede where it's being.
Okay, okay.
It's not coded wrong.
Okay, thanks, I'm just trying to get in, yeah. And by the way, I liked your answer, the internet is the actual internet. Couldn't, couldn't have been much clearer on that one, thank you.
Thank you, Al Gore.
She didn't say she invented it.
She did not. All right.
$25, sure.
Steve, anything about raising that up to 25, just in case we decide to hire another?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Where was it? Where'd I go? Hold on, I gotta catch up with myself. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Internal government services?
No.
Steve? All right. Maintenance funds?
Yeah, I would, I would actually like to see us pay ourselves back.
Right.
So I think, and personally, on, again, on Wendy's G sheet, I changed this to $26,000.
Okay. Did we ever figure out, did we get a bill from Integrity Energy Services?
Not yet.
We haven't?
No, but I know it's, it's coming.
We have a bill coming for around $10,000 from Integrity Energy Services. When we went to get that grant last year, that was part of that. If we didn't get the grant, we still have to pay them for the services for writing the grants and everything.
Oh.
So we have a bill coming for $10,000, so... And the reason I bring that up now is, is because that is not something we forecasted with our budget.
Sure.
Because we assumed we were going to get the grant. When we talked to Mark, and Mark by no means misled us in any way, shape, or form. But he was optimistic, we were all optimistic, and we assumed we were gonna get the grant, which we didn't. So now we, we do have a bill to pay back. So that's another $10,000 we have coming, that we did not forecast for.
Or $10,000 we have to go.
Yes, ma'am. We do, we don't, it's not coming in, it's going out.
Right, right.
No, thank you very much, yes, it is going out, so... Where would we put that before we get to talk about paying ourselves?
No, that's true.
That?
Actually, can I, can I back up for one second?
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize, but I have, I have way too many notes and have looked at some of this stuff a couple too many times. I actually have a question, I am, oh wait, yes, I'm gonna digress for one moment to back to sick and vacation pay. And the only thing I am going to ask is, these were actually taken out as expenses of our bottom line, but two, if not three of these are actually part of the salary, correct? Or is that an addition to the salary?
I honestly don't know, because I have never...
And the reason, the reason I'm asking is because if someone makes $50,000 a year, while some of that $50,000 goes to time off, they still will only make $50,000 a year. It's just, some of it is spent as, as let's call it productive work time, and some of it is not, so, sorry, I, that I...
That's a great point.
That is a good point.
So that's, I mean, that's, and I don't know if that applies to, well, I don't know if that would apply to the maintenance supervisor, it may or may not, but that's, we're looking at a potential of like 40, at least $40-something hundred dollars. So... Is, is, is the maintenance supervisor, is he salaried, or is he?
He's salaried.
He's salaried also.
Okay, so that would potentially be then for us?
The aquatic director, or the director, rather, head coach, maintenance supervisor?
Right, so, I mean, 62, 62, 61.
Oh, shit.
So, sorry, I forgot to mention that before.
No.
No, I, I noticed that before, I was like, I think we're double counting this, because it's part of their salary.
Yeah, all four of these positions are salaried.
Okay.
So that is paid for out of their salary.
Out of their salary, so we can take...
So we can take out the sick and vacation pay, because that comes out of their salary.
Isn't that fun?
That actually was fun.
I know.
Put money back in.
I've been dying with this one.
You're still $4,000 short, you know?
Yeah, we still...
So you're saying I didn't work hard enough on that one?
If you could magically find four more...
We did, it came out of the aquatic director's salary.
Okay, so, we're gonna take out the sick and vacation pay, because that is part of their salary.
All right, you just gotta do one thing, I'll just touch down.
Yes. Now that we, now that we took out a sick and vacation pay, I will be the killjoy and say, under maintenance funds, please, please add another line item for Integrity Energy Services.
Maintenance funds?
Yes, ma'am. Integrity Energy Services for $10,000.
He was putting it under maintenance funds?
I'm putting it under maintenance funds, because that was for facility improvements. Does everybody agree, I'm sorry, that was rather presumptuous. Does everybody agree with labeling it right there, since it was about maintenance of the facility? Cool, got three thumbs, two thumbs up? 21, yeah, 2,100, thank you. $21,000. Let's add that zero there, where it really belongs. Now, we've got those there, you were saying about the reserve fund and improvement fund.
Yeah, give me, give me one second.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, again, I'm adding here, 23, 715.
That's so cool.
What's cool is that pool is filled on a Wednesday evening, the way it should be. Oh, wow, you and the baby kids pool. Baby kids pool. I'm full of redundancies tonight, I'd like to apologize for Donna Sue for taking these minutes later. I know she's gonna have a heyday.
Well, okay, so I'm trying to do the bottom line here, and I would just, okay, so here's where, here's what I would say is...
Do we need to take a 10-minute recess?
No, 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 sorry, I'm just trying to figure out. I was unaware of the $10,000 thing.
Yes, ma'am.
And evidently everyone else, I mean, it slipped the mind, and that's, you know, it happens, that's fine, but... I would concede on this to 20 right now, but I would like to see bottom line. I know it's still gonna put us in the red. I, I know it's still gonna put us in the red, um, to, on the reserve fund.
You wanna move the reserve fund to?
From twenty-six to twenty. Again, I know, I, I, I don't wanna give away too much in, in that respect, but...
Okay. I'm sorry, so we, we initially took twenty-six thousand out of the reserve fund and instead of the six thousand that's in there, you'd like to move the six thousand to twenty?
Correct.
Thousand plus the ten thousand for energy integrity services, which will take us to thirty... No, it'll take us to thirty-five, correct? So we'd have...
Correct.
Twenty thousand for the reserve fund, five thousand for the improvement fund, and ten thousand for the...
Yeah, and I realize there might need to be an adjustment there still, but I'd like to... I, I'd like to manage that closely. I mean, the, the commitment was when, when we took the reserve fund, the commitment was that it would, that there would be a plan to pay it back.
Okay.
I, I feel like we, we can't...
If we get to the place and we can't pay it back, then what do we do then? Because, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's a good question.
Because you, I mean, it's gonna finally come down to that decision. You've got all these energy costs that you can't get around. You've got, you know, the employees and the, the salaries and all their benefits. And I would not feel comfortable at this point, you know, changing, changing all of that. I mean, I would love to pay it all back instantly. What do we do if we can't? That's my, my question. And I'm, and I'm not trying to...
No. I think that's a good question. It's out there for the taking, um... I think it's something to be observed, as you said, to be...
Because I would love it if we could do it. I just, I wonder...
Should we put this together and then look at that? Okay.
I mean, that's what, what's gonna happen, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I agree, it would be awesome, and we did commit to do that. I just kind of wonder if we can't do it twenty-six, I mean, well, the twenty.
We said we had to make a plan.
Yeah.
And I think what we said we'd do is, we will get as close to it as possible, I think is what we all agree on. We wanna get as close to it as possible. And if we don't pay it back in this budget, then we have to, we owe the taxpayers a plan to pay it back with our next budget.
Right, well, we've, we've committed to that.
So...
Thank you.
All right. We all agree. So, technology? There's not a whole lot there we can cut. Steve, anything on technology services? All right. Aerobics? These are supplies, I should say. Thank you very much. One, one of the things, and I, I know we can't, pool chemicals and pool supplies. Those are gonna have to remain where we have them as, as we talked about. The office supplies, and I know you guys have done a fantastic job. One thing I asked about, and I've asked the director about, is, is there any way to bump down the number of printers we have? Saving on paper and ink. And, and I'm gonna put this to what I know best. All right? I, I work in a fire station that has twenty-four people in it. We have one printer. I, as the boss, print a lot of crud. One printer.
This is what I would say to you.
Yes.
We have been without toner and we wanna put this pool for a couple of months.
Mm-hmm.
People are surviving.
Okay.
And we clearly need one at the front for printing swivel registration receipts and membership receipts because it requires that size. And we don't wanna leave the desk to come back here.
That makes sense.
And we have a big printer that does the bulk of our large printing.
Okay.
And then we have the color printer for those where we need... So if we could just not buy toner for that one in the visual and go without it for...
How about this? And this, I suggest this to the commission. And I'm gonna ask you to make even another sacrifice.
Okay.
Can we go without the color printer?
Um, I would say that when we run out of toner, we don't necessarily need to buy more. We do have several backups right now for it, so...
So buy no more colored toner printers for that third printer. Thank you for explaining it to me. That does make sense to me. Do you guys have questions on that?
It does.
Um, I mean, currently what we use the color for is, you know, we'll print one color copy of something to then scan or get a photograph of it to go for promotional purposes like on a website or Facebook page. So I think if we keep it to that, this toner we have will last a bit of while. We just really restrict people from printing in color.
We also, we very rarely print in color anyway. And I think the one thing that we do print in color that I would like to see us continue to do so is when we do print out our schedule, that we do take it down to OfficeMax and have it printed in color.
Well, that we send to them, we don't have a good printer here.
Okay, so I have to ask, you know, people using printers for their own personal business? Because, look, I work in a work center. I know how that works. And I know what we're told, don't do it. And people still do it anyway. You know, and, and in a case like this, it is the taxpayers who are paying for that ink. And have the, have the employees been told not to?
Um, you know, I, I don't think that it's really an issue. Not with our current staff.
All right, well, I would, okay.
Point made.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I don't see that really napping either.
Thank you.
So office supplies are pretty down and dirty. Can we cut more?
Well, I mean, we had, so, actuals for 2014 were twenty-seven fifty. The previous number we had was three thousand. So I, I took, again, Wendy math, I took twenty percent off of this number. Why twenty percent? Because it felt like something that's doable.
And what do we get?
Um, twenty-eight, eighty. Which is actually higher than twenty-fourteen actuals.
And how much have we spent so far this year for office supplies?
According to this, four hundred dollars. But I don't, but, but I realize that might be, that, that there's probably...
There's other coding issues, right? Something's on hold.
What is twenty, you, is twenty-eight eighty? What, what, where are you taking the twenty-eight eighty?
It was, uh, it was a cut of twenty percent off of the thirty-six hundred.
Thank you.
So taking the twenty-seven fifty-four actuals from two thousand fourteen.
And we could do that as well.
And then... How do you guys feel about using the actuals for twenty-fourteen for this year? Because we're making significant cuts.
Sure.
So let's use twenty-seven fifty-four for this year.
Hmm? It doesn't take out the imaging needs to go out at all, which is under your business?
The what?
Alpha imaging, which is under imaging.
The imaging, let's... Oh. What's alpha imaging?
We won't.
Toner. Toner bills. A, so, quickest explanation, a previous employee ordered a large amount of toner from this company that does not fit any of our machines. She led me to believe that they were sending her stuff so that she could return it to them after she was no longer here. That was not the case. And they won't accept it as a return. So they've been harassing Joanne relentlessly for eight months.
Months.
How much do we owe?
Two thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven. It's on that yellow piece of paper.
Holy cow.
No, I have it, I have it, the actual for... The original bill is for two thousand two hun- uh, twenty-eight hundred and eighty dollars. They will sell out right now for twenty-two hundred.
So they're saying we owe them twenty-two hundred dollars?
That is correct. This was after multiple attempts on parts of current staff to send back unused supplies and rectify the situation.
They won't accept it back?
They will not accept it back.
And the reason they won't accept it back is?
Past thirty days.
It's past the thirty days under which it was the core employee's responsibility to get it back. And it was not that.
Okay, so we, we exceeded thirty days.
But additionally, it's, it's a perishable item to a certain extent. I mean, we have to, we have to take into consideration.
We have to take it, so...
That is correct.
So we need to up basically office supplies then by twenty-two hundred. So instead of going down from thirty-six to twenty-seven fifty-four, we actually go to forty-nine fifty-four. Better to know that now than later. So forty-nine fifty-four. Can't skip out on a bill. Comments, questions about that one? All right. N WAC and Masters?
So this is something I am unclear on. We have to get team registration for N WAC in September. And I don't know if that's calculated into their monthly dues or...
Say that again, please.
We get team registration for each P and S. Um, for the team. And I wasn't sure if that's calculated into our monthly dues they pay per month or...
No, I just...
How that gets covered. Like, I don't know if it should be a separate line item expense in here?
I know my...
As the parent, all a parent has ever paid is the dues and then your penis registration.
That's your individual penis registration.
That's correct.
You guys pay in September. That's not the team registration.
Oh, okay.
Which is another...
I would say that that's different, that's separate.
Yeah. I think that's part of the something that we...
How much is?
I can't remember for two thousand sixteen. I think it's twenty-seven-five or four hundred, I don't remember.
Okay. So basically then for this, we need to add, we, we need to add a line item. So we need to add a line item and put four hundred dollars in there.
Team registration.
Team registration. Yes. Do you agree?
Sorry, I, I'll, I'll admit, I wasn't done in the previous one, so I was trying to make sure that I...
No, I am sorry, I didn't mean number one.
It's okay.
I apologize.
I was trying to, the pool chemicals were twenty-three five, they're now twenty-four. We had talked last time about twenty-five five, and I was just trying to make sure that twenty-four was sufficient because that's what we had on our last one.
And I say we are, we upped that because of the ultraviolet issues we've been having. So I think that's why we went to twenty-five, correct?
Well, we, I, I, I won't lie, I don't recall why, but if we were at twenty-three five, we said twenty-five five and now we're at twenty-four. I just wanna be sure that we feel confident that twenty-four is gonna cover it when...
Is twenty-four gonna cover us for the rest of the year? If we have a hot summer with our ultraviolet issues?
We should put that off.
We should put that at twenty-five five. So let's also change, we all agree to be safe to air on the side of safety. Let's move the pool chemicals to twenty-five five. And anything else on that prior section?
No, sorry.
No, don't, no, don't apologize, please, why we're doing it. Team registration, we add into the N WAC Masters. Anything else? Good point. Thank you, Julie.
And I, I apologize if I, again, was, was fixated on previous stuff trying to reconcile it, but then we, we, um, we recoup these costs or we do not?
This is a team registration. I don't believe it's factored into the monthly.
Okay, okay, sorry, I, I did hear a little bit of that. Thank you. Thank you, sorry for making you repeat that. Okay.
Good?
Yep, thank, thank you.
Steve? Aquatics?
No.
Maintenance expenses?
Um, the twenty, sorry, um, to twenty-five, I'm just trying to... So repair and maintenance went up by twenty-five percent.
I added in Matt's computer program.
Oh.
I'd only added a small amount for it and I wanted to add it so that it would be sixty-five hundred.
Okay, so we're accounting in that for all sixty-five hundred? Correct, okay.
Thank you. Anything else on maintenance and expenses?
Nope.
Utilities?
They are what they are.
Yes, that's, that is very well said. Clover Valley Water, the only question I have is I see this summer being extremely dry and at one point or another, somebody is telling us we're not gonna water anymore. How...
Is this for watering the lawn?
That's for watering...
For the ball fields?
That's for watering the ball fields. This is for the water out at Clover Valley.
And I think there's also a stand type of dog park that you can build a bucket on.
That's correct. And so...
This is a tough, different day, but we need to look at utilizing that space over there for more things than just what we do.
Yep. I guess we should leave that at eight hundred as a worst-case scenario because if they shut it down, that'll just be extra that we, okay. Anybody feel differently? All right. We've got new numbers. I would like to take a...
Can I, sorry, can I add one thing before you do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the only, I added in, um, and, and perhaps this is accounted for elsewhere, if it is, I'm sorry. But the thought of, um, if we happen to hire a director of moving expenses just as a consideration because we offered them to this company. I felt like that, I, I added in two thousand dollars. I, I just added them to the bottom. I ju, I just felt like we needed to account for that. What's that?
No, 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 no. No, that needs to be under expenses for salary and wages somewhere.
Okay.
Um, as a line item, do you guys agree?
Sure, yeah.
So under salary and wages, add a line item? And what did you, what, what?
I put, I put two thousand because, again, it was, that's what we did for, for the cost.
So please add two thousand under, everybody agrees salary and wages for possible moving expenses. That way we are covering. All right. Can we add those cha-, how long would it take you to add those changes to this budget? Do we do it while we continue the meeting? I would like to take a five-minute recess, if that's okay with everybody.
You bet.
All right. At, um, eight fifty, we're gonna, we're gonna make it a ten-minute recess till nine o'clock to get the budget back out for everybody to look at. So we'll take a recess for ten minutes. Call the meeting back to order at nine o'clock with the new revised budget in front of us. The one thing we were looking at was a... Where'd we come out in here? It did and I didn't see it.
Now, if you notice, I did add in Wendy's twenty thousand dollars.
Oh, you did.
Or just so we could see with, with that, um...
It's not Wendy's twenty thousand.
No.
But I understand your point.
The taxpayer's point.
Wendy's idea of, is that better?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Where do, where do we put the integrity? Ten thousand.
It is...
Under maintenance expenses?
On page five of six.
Thank you very much. I apologize. I apologize for not seeing that, no. So right now we are at a deficit of eleven thousand and eighty-nine dollars.
So the twenty thousand dollars?
That's the easy go-to.
Can we reduce it to ten thousand dollars? And then develop a plan to pay it back over the course of the next two years? Or whatever it is?
I would not, personally, I would not be comfortable with anything less than half. So I would say thirteen.
Half?
Of the amount that's owed.
Twenty-six, so if we take twenty-six, then we pay thirteen.
I was glossing in my mind.
Sorry, yeah.
So I had to do the same thing, thank you. And so if we take the, where did we put that again?
It is page... It is page 3 of 6.
Reserve funds, wanting to reduce it to 13?
So reserve funds, move that to 13?
I would be good with that.
I mean, we still have adjustments, yeah, to make, but...
13, right there.
7, which brings out 11.
To 4, 089.
4089, right?
Correct.
089. So we need to find $4,089 in our budget to come.
So the plan would be to try to pay the 26 in two years then?
That would be correct.
Basically, yeah, that's good.
We're committing, we're committing, do we all agree we're committing for the record to pay the other 13 next year?
Absolutely.
Absolutely?
At a minimum.
Okay. I think it's important for us to say for the record.
If, if, if you don't mind, just do you have any, if I, can I ask?
I already did. Cecil, did you want to, I told him to pop off anytime he wanted.
Okay, good. No, I just didn't know if you have an opinion on it.
No, I appreciate it.
Okay. The, okay, so here, so one thing that I would then go back to is, so potentially I would go back to moving expenses and I would, I would reduce that out of need if we don't feel that we can. I mean, that's one thing that I would, sorry, we added it to page 2.
Can I just ask if we, what if we just do away with that? The reason is we did not, we did not want to give it to the coach, but the fact is the former director had entered into a contract with him without our approval.
That's correct.
And just to be honest, we would not have given that.
Yeah.
And we were advised by legal counsel to go ahead and do it anyway. So to me, I think we should do away with that and...
2,000 for moving expenses is all agreed, taken out of the budget?
Agreed, yes, sorry. That was quick.
Commissioner Hopfire?
Yes, thank you.
So there we go. So we need to find, to finally reconcile the budget, final approval, we need to find $2,089.
Do we already adjust for any increase in attendance for the active duty dependents being free?
A little, but not that much.
And can we really, let me, let me ask a question. Can we...
At the end of this month, I would be able to give a good estimate of what that increase will be.
So I would like to say we take that as a bonus, we all agree on, because after one month, not even a complete month, we don't know what the long-term impact is that going to be. And I don't think that's fair to put it into a budget that's from last year that we're trying to rectify. Agreed? Commissioner Hopfire?
Yes, thank you.
Future Commissioner Pierce, thank you very much.
So I...
Yeah, because that was for last year, yes. That's what that was taken from. Good question. The question from the director was about the intergovernment services and election. And that was, just for everybody's reminder, that was for last year's election, not for this upcoming forthcoming election, so that number cannot change.
So I think I have, let's see, I have two, oh, actually, I have a question before, I have suggestions. So in terms of the reserve fund, the return of monies to the reserve fund, what would our expectation be in terms of timing? So... Okay. I just don't know, so, okay, I'll ask the really dumb question, which is how do we pay that back? Is it really just a, is it a request of a transfer to the county?
Yes, it is. We have to transfer it to the county because we had to transfer out of the reserve fund and we would have to transfer back to the reserve fund and that goes back down to Mar... Matt? I can't remember the guy's name.
Tony.
Is it Tony? I was really close. I could have kept throwing out names all night, but thank you for helping me out. So we have to transfer through the county from MNO back to the reserve fund. Okay. Does that answer your question?
It does, and so I would, oh, this is really difficult. I still would like to cut the office supply budget a little bit.
Can I recommend something?
Can I finish?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's just...
No, I'm sorry.
I just...
That was rude.
It's okay, I just, I would just like to complete the thought because I had two thoughts here and I would like to see, I mean, to me, this is something that is controllable and so I would like to, I recognize that we need to pay, I, I'm not talking about messing with that, but I would like to see us reduce something that is, it's fluid to a certain extent, no toner jokes intended, but, but a good one, right? Just kidding. But I would like to see us reduce that. That, to me, would be one suggestion, even if it's by $100 or a little bit more. That would be one thing. The other one would be, I think there are more difficult, I, the other one would probably be to unfortunately reduce at least by a certain amount the improvement fund. And I hate to even bring that up. I hate to.
Can I bring up $1,000 real quick that might help?
Sure, sure, yes.
The executive director, that we forego the matching funds for this calendar year, whoever's hired, we let them know this will be offered to you at the beginning of 2015.
For the retirement.
It's already, yes, it's already in the budget that it's not there for this year. But at the start of 2015, we'll do the matching funds for the director. That's $1,000.
I, I agree with that.
I think that's great and I would actually even modify that to say after probationary period of, let's say, six months in the job.
I actually like that even better.
Right, I mean, because it's not then dependent on the calendar.
So that takes care of the 1,000 for this year and we need to remember that when we look at next year's budget.
Exactly, like write that down.
So there's 1,000 right there. All right, so that takes us down to $1,089.
So just another random thought that would actually generate some revenue instead of cutting more. I know we discussed it briefly at the points, but a lot of swim teams programs, they charge like a fee only and no maintenance fee.
We cannot add a fee in our current budget. And the reason is because if we change or add fees, that is something we do outside of the budget.
Outside of the budget, okay.
All right, the budget has to be based on the fees that we currently have in place. Very good point. And I think being a swim team parent, I can speak for this, there is a huge movement to pay for more. All right? But that can't be accounted for in this budget either. So you have to go with what we're paying and what we're getting as closely as we can. But that's a good point, so thank you very much, Julie.
Yeah, moving forward, that would take care of our deficit right there.
Yep.
And to go back to the payroll benefits, would it be wrong to, to ask Coach Taylor to commit to whether he's going to participate in it this year or not? He hasn't to this point. That's $2,000 that we're, we're saying that we're going to, we have budgeted. If he tells us, no, I'm not going to participate in it this year...
I think that might be a breach of contract because he's under contract.
Well, I just thought of throw it out.
No.
No, I understand what you're saying, I do.
We could, we could ask, however, it's in his contract and he's elected not to take it, but if...
The more I think about it, it would be wrong.
He may change his mind anytime.
It would be influencing and I don't think that's fair either.
Okay.
However, to, I mean, to look at that number though, and unless I, I apologize if I'm, but if he makes...
You are right there, what you're saying.
I think we can adjust it. I mean, we can adjust it because we need to down adjust it based on if he hasn't used it through the end of June.
So how much is he, what is his salary?
47,000.
Okay, see, it's even, it's even lower than, so 7%.
And then we're going to figure for how many months?
So if he took it in July?
So six, yeah.
Five months.
July, August, September, October, November, December 6.
Well, that would be six months, yeah.
Could be half.
And I use...
Yeah, exactly. It would be half of whatever that number is. It would be divided by 12 times 6.
Get times 0.7. I figured it out wrong. Cheap calculator.
Hey now.
I got it. It's a whole dollar. I love it. It's awesome.
So 1645, I believe. 1645? Sorry.
And half of 1645 would be...
No, no, that's 1645.
1644.
Yeah, 1645 is the number.
That is right.
Yeah, I mean, so we're only down adjusting it by 275, but that, it's 275.
So 275 there.
Yep.
So 1645?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, so we are at 814. Sorry.
No, we're doing good.
Hey, it feels, it feels almost like success.
We're almost there. Remind me again what retail is.
Goggles, caps.
So it's down to 814.
Yeah. Goggles, caps, and non-food items.
How much have we spent on goggles, caps, and non-food items?
So more jump in.
3,995.
How much?
That one's one of those dumping in weird. So if our retail is already 3,000, would we be able to go up on the concessions?
Well, that's the retail separate from concessions, but...
It is, it's under the concession budget though, or line items on the revenue. So if we've already taken in over 3,000.
But I'm wondering if, if I was to use someone's separate already, would that...
Once again, coding issues.
Okay. Can I ask you a question on the medical insurance while they're doing that? When we took it from 25 down to 24, we had had, we had had figured in there a director and a spouse, correct?
That is correct.
So would that have came down more than just that?
That would have come down more because I believe it was taking, starting in July.
So I'm saying that may be what we're looking for just in insurance, you guys. I mean...
Very good point.
That's a very good point because currently we would not be paying a director or a spouse for medical insurance until we hire one at some point.
And that's three more months.
And that's at least three more months.
I think that that could be what we're looking for right there, so...
I think he's probably got a good point.
So do you feel comfortable dropping the medical, employee medical insurance $1,000 to 2370?
I would, yeah.
23,700. Julie, does that sound 23,700? I don't want to drop too much.
Well, let me get an exact number.
Oh, I like that even better. I like that.
I like that better too.
Okay, so if we were to...
Take it.
If we're assuming that we might have a director October, November, December, so then July, August?
June, July? July, August, yeah.
I think you're probably looking at December, but... You're probably looking two months, November, December, really, when you're really thinking about it.
You feel comfortable with two months instead of three?
We could say three.
No, I think, I would say three.
Three to be safe, yeah, we all agree.
So per month, we could say 415, 43 for the director and health insurance. So that's not...
15, 43. So we'd save that for two more months, right?
Correct, so 830.
$830, $831.
And then a spouse is 50%.
And then 461. So we'd save 230, 80 per month on the spouse.
That's 1,200.
So you could take that down 1,200.
So we could take it to 23...
23,5.
23. And that balances our budget.
Word.
All right. Ms. Erica, one more time.
You got it.
Back to the...
This is about saving money.
This is, this is worth it.
I agree. So let me just check that I have these correct.
Okay.
I have the moving expenses down to zero.
That's correct.
The head coach to 1645.
That's correct.
The executive director down to zero on payroll benefits. Medical insurance down to 23,500. The reserve fund down to 13,000.
That's correct.
All right. I will return shortly.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Since we're still on, aren't we?
Yeah, we were still on, miss.
When we look at this budget and if there is a motion made to adjust the temperature, it affects the energy.
It does.
And how do we, would we immediately have to reconcile a budget? Would we do that?
And I would say we wouldn't be able to even forecast that because that's that 6,500 that's already in the budget. As she put it in there for the maintenance funds for that program. So that's already in there, but without knowing how the air temperature is going to affect the water temperature, that would be a total...
It's going to be a warm summer.
It is going to be a warm summer and that is the good news. So I don't think our gas bill will go up that much this summer, but once again, I think we should go with what we have from last year and continue forward.
And I don't want to get the card in for...
No, it's a good question and something that for public records should be discussed, but I think we should go with what we paid for last year. Yes, Pierce, Cecil?
Oh, it is going to say, one thing I may add is, I mean, in a way, it may be that there may actually drop the overall cost because the more you sit there and keep that water at a steady temperature, it's going to cost less to keep it there than heating it up, you know?
Up and down, balancing up and down.
So, you know, there's a chance that it actually could stabilize compared to what we're spending now.
That's correct.
I feel so much better about this than, than January.
Yes.
You guys are awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, I'd like to thank all of us. I'd really like to thank Joanna and Julie for all your hard work.
Absolutely, thank you.
You guys have done a lot for the district. Thank you.
And for making it so much easier to, I'm, I'm, I'm making a presumption right now and so hopefully I'm correct in it, but our P&As will look so much more fabulous and our, I mean, things are, I'm just really excited about that. Very excited about that. Can...
We, you know what, let's do some, let's do some other stuff while we're here. I would like to get this meeting over, I'm going to call the meeting, ask for a motion to adjourn at 10 o'clock and not push past 10, no matter where we're at.
Okay.
Whether that happens or not, but I'd like to move forward. Strategic planning, we're going to need to table that until next month. Program review.
We'll have it on a plate next month.
We will get table that for next month. Telecom issue.
So we are in Internet outages?
Are they still continuing?
They are still continuing. We have had Frontier here. They think it might be a problem with the outlet it's actually plugged into. They had asked us to take a picture or write down the lights that were displayed. They would like our IT guy to come in around the time everyone has going out and plug in our laptop around that time and see what's happening.
So we're getting, are we getting a better response from them?
Um, from Frontier?
Right.
Marginally. Erica's attempting to deal, but she can fill you in on it.
Okay. Okay, let's go back to the budget since we're back here. So with the changes we made, we just made to the budget. We now have a budget that is not only balanced, but is showing three hundred and eighty-six dollars on the plus side. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
I would like to make a motion that we approve this budget. The twenty-fifteen budget revision that we prepared this evening.
We have a motion to approve the budget revision that was made this evening.
Second.
I have a second. Discussion.
Well, Erica was out of the room when we said it, but thank you as well.
Yes, thank you.
And we thank them because we know how hard everybody's worked on it.
They 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 had a lot of credit as well. It was a team effort.
Thank you. That was all the discussion for me.
I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Do a touchdown dance, that's good.
I was about to say, everybody deserved a touchdown dance. Thank you again, ladies. That was fantastic. That's, that is nice. Alright, um, the telecom issue is where we left off at. Bless you. Erica.
Telecom issue. Um, we have had some issues with our current internet provider, Frontier. We have been looking into the possibility of switching to another provider. At this point in time, Comcast, who we did contact, wanted to charge us way too much money. So at this point, we are going to stay where we're at unless they can come down substantially.
Okay, and we're having issues with Frontier, is that correct?
Frontier, our internet goes down between eight fifteen and eight thirty every single day, almost without fail. And sometimes we'll come up within the next fifteen, twenty minutes after it first goes down. Other times, it won't come back up until the next day. This does disrupt business quite substantially. However, uh, what would disrupt business even more was the twenty-six thousand dollars Comcast wanted to charge us to run cables back and forth. So at this point, that's not a viable option. However, I have been in contact with them and talking to them about the fact that some of our neighbors do have Comcast and whether they might be able to to lower that price. I told them I could maybe do one percent or two percent of that.
But I but I think if, and and so we, when you were out of the room, we had asked for an update, and what we heard was it's still consistently happening. There are different types of troubleshooting, and the fact of the matter is, is if it tends, if it if it's going to be with hardware or with some sort of wiring, et cetera, I mean, no matter who we go with, that's that's potentially an issue. And so I think I just wanted an update to understand, are we still having the issues? Is it still impacting our productivity? Um, and and trying to understand is there a resolution? And it sounds like the answer is not yet.
They are continuing to troubleshoot it, and I have continued to let them know that I'm not a hundred percent willing to pay for it until they can figure out what their problem is. So far, they've gone along with that fairly well.
So we should have, we should be seeing bill adjustments, then?
Uh, I certainly hope so. That's what I've been told on the phone. I've asked for it in writing, and I've not gotten that yet.
If this continues, how does the board feel about asking Frontier to come and send a representative to explain this to the board next month?
It's a great idea.
I like that.
Absolutely.
Taxpayers' money we're talking about here.
Absolutely.
Um, if this continues, if this continues consistently, I I'd like to do two things. I'd like to ask the director to make sure that we keep a log for the next two weeks of daily outages. Take that log to Frontier, and then if they don't have a solution, ask them to provide a rep in an email.
I like that.
In an email, ask them to provide a representative to the next board meeting. If, and please, if they decline uh, over the phone, tell them you want it in writing per the email. And bring whatever response or the rep to the next meeting and the log. This is taxpayers' money. Taxpayers are paying for a service. They are not getting what they're paying for, and I don't think this board, I I don't want to speak for the whole board, but I don't think any of us is comfortable with that.
No, I agree.
It it's also costing us additional IT costs. That's you, I forgot you weren't here. So so it's not only just that we're not getting the service we're paying for, it's actually costing us money elsewhere.
Well, I'm just asking us extra payroll because
Sure.
once we can't finish our night out there accurately, it's I'm having to come in and help fix things.
Sure.
How long have we went with Frontier?
First of all, I mean, at least since two thousand twelve. I think that's when I came here and we were with Frontier then. I don't know whether that is that old.
Alright, um, real quick, program review is, I'm gonna ask the director to keep this short, only in the spirit of other covering other things. Is there anything significant in the program review that needs to be brought before the board?
What do you mean, program review?
Yeah, we're talking about, that's the director's report, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, we still have unfinished business.
We do.
We do.
I'm sorry, thank you.
It's okay.
Um, pool schedule.
So when we approved the pools, so two things. One is, when we approved the pool schedule, one of the discussions was that um we were looking for some concession as it related to the N WAC pool time. And so I just wanted to hear what what are we doing?
Um, our coach Taylor did agree to allow private lessons to be taught from two forty-five until three forty-five, giving up lane one. As the summer schedule goes in, um, he is going to be giving up five thirty to six thirty because of the amount of lessons and stuff that we have going on at that time. Um, he will have us hold off briefly on the two forty-five to three forty-five while he just looks at how that's going to work with those groups, and then he is going to work with us again on looking at his lane space, and as it's available, he says he has no problem with the private lessons um, coming in and some of the instructors. The reason that we do private lessons instead of a lap swim is because I don't have to pay a lifeguard. If I allow my instructors to come in and teach, they are, those instructors that would be allowed to come in are lifeguard qualified, so they would be able to
That's a good point, Erica. That's a great point.
And so instead of opening it up for lap swim where I would have to pay, it actually is cost-effective for me to have a lifeguard certified instructor who would be making that time. So he is willing to work with us just with what lane space he has. He was very open to having those conversations with me.
Just for for Mr. Pierce, if we could, if N WAC is on deck, the coach is a lifeguard. So you don't have to have a, yeah, and you don't have to have a lifeguard on duty. So that's why we wouldn't do a lap swim during that one lane then?
Well, that's that's the reason why, because the coach, um, with, as pre-USA swim, not every coach has to be a lifeguard. They have to be one of two things. They have to be either a lifeguard or they have to be U S, um, safety training for swim coach certified, which is something similar. It's not a lifeguard. So for us, that is what our coach currently has, is the safety training for swim coaches, which would not allow for him to cover a lap swimmer. It allows for him to cover a swim team only.
Thank you.
So that's why we would go with the instructor.
And that's covered by USA Swimming Insurance.
And that is covered by USA Swimming Insurance. So to bring in a lifeguard and have one or two lap swimmers would not be cost-effective, whereas where I'm letting private lessons come in during that time would be.
Good point, good point.
So I, one thing that I didn't understand, I think, prior to last month was, is that, if I understand it correctly, please tell me if I'm wrong, but that during N WAC practice, none of the other facilities are open. And if that's the case, I I I don't, I I think we should make them available. So a-again, it would be an additional, um, the kiddie pool, the um, the sauna, the hot tub.
Pay for lifeguard?
I I I think there's potential there. I mean, I I think yes, because if you look at how many people you would need to break even, it's not that many, is it? I don't know.
Yeah, the average lifeguard makes approximately ten dollars an hour, averaging. What we've got some that make more and some that make less.
Base salary.
But your base salary would be around ten dollars an hour. I mean, that would be...
I I I think we have to, so...
It's definitely worth looking at.
When we, well, I I mean, I, if we don't have a reason not to do it, I think we should try to do it.
Can I bring up one reason I would think would not be good? It's just, have you ever been here during a practice? It can be crazy. You get kids like going every which way, and then if you're thinking about kiddies in the kiddie pool, I just see somebody getting hurt, you know? I can see, I understand adults over in the, you know, adults can kind of protect themselves. I can just see a little kitty, kid in the kiddie pool just getting ran over on a pool deck.
How would one guard be able to cover the hot tub and the kiddie pool?
Well, what we would need to have is is to set...
With fifty kids in between.
Yeah, with uh, with, one guard would be able to, if the swim coach is out there, because that would take up the the second set of eyes that we would need.
Here's, here's where I'm coming from with this, is there there are really only two things we can do here to try to put ourselves more in the black. And one of them is to reduce expenses, and I think we feel like we've done a good job with that. The other one is to raise revenues. And if you look at that schedule, one thing that really jumped out at me, and I I think I said this in last meeting, but is there's a lot of compromise all of the time. And and from my perspective, here's how I look at it, is unless N WAC is renting the pool, and they're not, and I'm not trying to make any suggestion about what type of organization they are or anything else, I just, unless they're renting the pool, I don't believe that that it should be an exclusive situation. I I think we should be, we should be maximizing our opportunities to generate revenue.
Okay.
That's, and so what's the right mix? I can't tell you technically that I I know what the right safety and legal options are, but I do believe that we have to try to maximize our revenue.
Okay. I'll stop you, and I'm gonna use my chances as a chair to go. And here's what I gotta say. I am all about change. And I think we've opened up those lanes, and we've making a change that is safe for everybody currently. You said something that caused me to stop, and as a competitive swim dad, caused my hackles to go up even though I'm a commissioner. And that is, the second set of eyes would be the swim coaches. I can tell you right now, we all know, the the team is very supportive, the parents are very supportive for change. We know it's coming. We we want to be part of that change.
Absolutely.
However, if you, out of the blue tonight, if we, I'm sorry, I apologize. If we, out of the blue tonight, take that second set of eyes for safety, because you just said that, and take those eyes off of my child that I'm paying for...
And I never suggested that, by the way.
I know you did.
Okay.
But I'm putting these together, and this is my gut reaction. Without socializing that with the club first, I think we're setting ourselves up to be adversarial change agents. I think if we want to use the coach as a second set of eyes and open up more of the pool to other swimmers, which which, maybe that's the way to go in the future, right? I would suggest that we come up with a plan, and then before we implement it, we ask the swim team parents to come to a meeting and get their feedback. And then, if nothing else, hear what they have to say, and then explain our rationale for our decision. And the reason I say that is because I think change, when it is inclusive, is much more positive than when it is directive.
While I agree, I think um, I I think we have to be sure not to confuse two things. I talked about looking at the options.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
Well, but I think it's important, though. I talked about looking at the options for generating additional revenue. I didn't say at any point in time that your kid would not be watched. Right?
Right.
So, and I think I also, right before that, said, um, I would not, I would not want to do anything to compromise the safety of anyone
No, I agree, right, I agree.
at our pool, anyone for any reason. So, so what I think I'm trying to suggest is, and and I think that's fine, but what I would, what I would say that then goes to the next thing, which is if, given the situation we had with the summer schedule, we need the, we need a draft of the fall schedule next month. Um, and I would like then for us to consider that. Well, part of the discussion last month was, well, we have to, we have to approve it because people have been waiting for it. And I know that there was some discomfort in doing that. So if we want the ti, the the time for all of us to to consider it, then I I think, then we need it next month, so that we can have due time at that, which which I think would hopefully include some of those changes.
So, and it's my fault for not being here last month.
No.
But we approved the schedule.
Correct.
And we put in, and correct me if I want to catch me back up, um, we asked for changes from the swim team.
Well, it was, it wasn't part of the motion. It was, it was a good faith change that, and so part of my status follow-up was to understand what were we doing?
Okay.
And how was it working? Yeah.
Okay, so we made a good faith change, and now you're making other suggestions how we could continue that good faith change in the future?
I think, well, I think...
Tomorrow or next week?
And and I think what I'm, I think what I'm suggesting is that when we look at the fall schedule, we understand what's working, what isn't working, because I know that there were different opinions about how the summer schedule should go. And again, from my perspective, I don't personally care whether it's a lap swim or a private, it's whatever makes the most sense and what are compatible exercises, I would say.
Got it.
That also is about safety. Yeah, so there was a lot of discussion.
Okay, got it. Now, now I feel...
One thing I remember going forward, I mean, if you look at history, and for whatever, if it means anything to you, I remember when Craig Carlson was here, he had played with these hours over time. He was a, I I feel that Mr. Carlson was a very physically responsible director. You know, I think that you can look back and you can kind of see that. But one of the things that he said when he looked at hours is, because he'd played with that N WAC block before, that if, if you left it open, like open swim or whatever right after school, it would be an empty pool. And that's why he went, and that's why, you know, historically, when you look at swim teams, when they go for that block of time, it's because it's a vacant pool during that time, especially during the school year. You know, kids are out of school, but mom and dad aren't off work, you know? And it's just, you know, going forward, when you look at the fall schedule, uh, you know, I mean, if it means anything to you to think about history, you know, what what maybe, maybe this has already been looked at before, so...
So can we then have the fall schedule prior to next month's meeting for review, so we can start reviewing it next month in preparation of approving it prior to September?
Yeah, go work on it at senior staff meeting next year.
Okay.
Perfect, great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, pool schedule. Uh, update on Silver Sneakers.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir? Oh, I am so sorry, Cece, go ahead.
This should hear you meet sometime, and it's more information that you never had before, because the pool's gonna be open in August. And you just said that the swim team was not going to be here for the three weeks in August, correct?
That is correct.
That would be a good time.
So during that timeframe there, you can really look at a lot of things to see what's going to work and what's not going to work. So you could, but you know what I'm saying, you know, there there there, that block of time for the swim team is gone, because they're not gonna be here. So you can sit there and look at different things, and maybe see if some of it is feasible, some of it isn't. Are you gonna find out everything? Well, heck no, you're not. But you may be able to find out some information that can really help direct things later on.
That's a great point.
Especially for the summertime.
Yeah, absolutely.
It wouldn't really help you during the school year, but I do agree, in the summer, I'm sure.
So maybe...
I think we'd get a good indication if we were to open it for lap swim, hot tub, sauna, kids pool during that time for this three weeks, and just kind of really carefully monitor those attendance numbers.
Sure.
Because that would be your same group of people that would be likely to be here during the school year.
Yeah, cool.
Your adults, your families with really little kids that are looking for an afternoon activity.
And depending how that...
That's a conversation that we need to have at another time. I have very mixed feelings on this. Um, I I I was with Craig Carlson looking at that N WAC block of time. What I see is a possibility of a compromise later on, where we can have swim team in the water and we can keep our other facilities open.
But is there a reason we can't, for those three weeks, do exactly what was said?
Yeah, I think that's great.
And pay a guard to do lap swim?
Yeah, we can, we could run a lap swim, and we could, we could actually extend our open swim to half an hour, then run lap swim.
Yeah, I think as long as we as well promote it, meaning that people are aware of it, sorry.
We, um, the board approves, so I'm gonna bring us back to the business at hand. The board approves the schedule. If we make even a temporary schedule change, just like we adjust the budget, we need to make a motion and change that schedule.
But that's actually not true, though, because there are some things where that, sorry, I
No, it's okay.
There could have been things that on their well, well, we do this at this time, so that's actually not true.
So do we feel comfortable giving the director the leeway to make those changes during the summer downtime for N WAC?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, because there's a lot of things with that schedule that I've questioned over time. You know, and I'll tell you, one of the big ones to me is, you know, the way kids get shoved into the the seven thirty to nine slot you're talking about, for open swim, you know, and lap swimmers want to hold on to that time, man. But you know what? Little kids gotta go to bed. You're an adult, you can stay up, I'm sorry. So I mean, there's a lot of things to look at with some of that, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
I agree with you.
Alright, further comments on pool schedule? Update on Silver Sneakers?
Um, we have, actually, our contracts and everything have been signed. We have actually gone into the training phase now, which is one of the last phases that we complete before we go into being able to offer it. Uh, what we have left is Julie is currently, was working on the training today. It was sent to us via email today, as a matter of fact. We are going to be the training, which basically shows us how to handle and how to report our Silver Sneakers patrons as they come in. Once we have that done, we need to show Silver Sneakers our way of recording. If we don't come to an agreement, we're trying to see whether Esoft would be a... If we don't come to an agreement, we're trying to see whether ESOP would be a good way to track it, or whether we use something from, from Silver Sneakers to track it instead. Then we would be able to provide them with the Excel spreadsheet that they ask for, to for reimbursement. So we are in the, we're three quarters of the way through the process, and we are diligently working to finish it up. Like I said, we got our links today to work on the training that they require before you're able to be fully approved.
I'm looking at the training I was doing today, I'm looking at it and what it will take. We'll have to do a staff training for all the front desk people, and just with our timeline of people, since announced on vacations, I'm looking at probably the third week of July to be able to do some sort of event here where we can have people come and get their commitments done.
Yay!
Yeah, that's an estimate, but-
Yeah, no, no, but excellent, cool.
That's great, that's all we needed.
Yeah, it's a, it's a little bit of paperwork, similar to NWA, they have to sign waivers, and they have to keep very strict control of their files and whatnot, so it'll take a little bit to get that all in.
It is, it is something that we have talked about, not only hosting an event here for our current patrons, but to put this out to all of our retirement communities, nursing homes, et cetera, in our area, the senior center being one on the list, to let people know that, you know, not only do we have this program, but that we're going to host a membership event and get people, as many people as possible. We'll be looking for that in the next six weeks or so.
Financial review, I'm sorry, sorry, any other questions about Silver Sneakers? Financial review update. How are we on balancing the books and everything? Are we completed with that?
Yes, till May.
We're updated till May?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys are doing a great, once again, with everything you're doing, you're doing a great job, thank you. Staff reports, quick, down and dirty, anything for staff reports, ma'am?
You know, really, the only big one was the Silver Sneakers. The Silver Sneakers, you guys.
Questions?
The, now, the rest of it is pretty self-explanatory, I think. The employee handbook review is, and edits, if you want to call them that, which Commissioner Hawley and I have been working on over the last couple of months, is coming along very well. Just a quick, quick progress update, I have made all of the changes that she has, she and I have talked about. It is an editorial note, so basically what I have done is, is shown what changes we have made by doing a cross-out, using the cross-out on a, on a Word document, and adding our edits in red, so that you guys are able to see previously what was there and what the suggestions are. We are through, I think there's 10 chapters in the employee handbook plus the appendices. We have finished through chapter nine, I am beginning on chapter 10. Commissioner Hawley will come back, we will finish chapter 10 and hit the appendices. We will email the entire book to the board for review, and then hopefully go through any changes that need to be made, and then we will prove the final handbook. So it is, many, most of the edits are finished.
So can I just add that, I don't know if you're aware of this, but the bylaws actually say that, okay, first of all, it's supposed to be by annual review. That's not any of our faults that that hasn't been done, but however, it does actually have to include five employees in, as part of that process, so I would just-
The senior staff has also been mailed, emailed that book for their review.
Okay, as long as it's not just parts, I mean, a, part of it is, is not just the part that applies to them, but the whole thing.
No, they have been emailed the entire thing with a request that they especially look at their department job descriptions-
Sure.
-and that they make any suggestions or changes to those department job descriptions, as they are the experts on them, that they have been provided with the entire handbook. And I've asked that they return to me within, it was two weeks from the date that I emailed it out to them, that they have a chance to look it over and make any suggestions as well.
Two things that I personally would suggest adding are, if they're not in there already, are a telecommuting policy.
Yes.
Okay, as well as a children-at-work policy.
Uh, yeah.
I mean, there are laws, but, but we, but it, I'm, I believe we need to be more explicit.
There is something in there, but I think it could be beefed up, so I will, I will look at that.
Okay, thanks, sorry, I didn't mean to hijack your, your report, no.
Really quick, I'm going to read the employee of the month.
Yay!
Employee of the month for May 2015 was Tanya Melendez. Tanya displayed exceptional dedication to her team and our patrons during the month of May. She helped cover numerous shifts when unexpected staff changes left gaps to be filled in the schedule. She has eagerly picked up some additional responsibilities, which help enable senior staff members to complete tasks in a more timely manner. Tanya consistently greets customers with a friendly smile and a helpful attitude. Thank you for your dedication and hard work, Tanya. All right, nothing more on staff reports, questions, Commissioner Hofmeyer?
Quickly, quickly, sorry. Open records request, we don't have a report in here, do we?
Um, honestly-
Or, or, I should, sorry, I shouldn't point that at you.
Well, I honestly, I've not had a lot of time to respond, I have been in communication with the parties, but I'll give it my highest.
Do we have a lot of them?
I don't think we have any new ones since the last meeting, maybe one from the newspaper.
Okay, thanks.
Have we taken care of the one situation that had been brought up to where if a person puts one in, that they have that five days-
So good.
-when they're given a reasonable estimate of time?
Yes, anything incoming, I'm sure we do that.
Thank you, I'm good.
All right, so, no, no, that is good. All right, we're done with staff reports. Alpha Imogene, we covered earlier-
We did.
-with the toner.
We did.
And it's correct? Okay. Program development?
We, you know what, I can forego this.
I agree.
We'll push that to next month?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Insurance update?
I spoke with Jeff Olson, our insurance agent, day before yesterday, Monday, I guess I would say before yesterday, and he is making good progress. Anything that they have asked from us has been provided to them. There were some letters, there were some information that they had asked for specifically regarding what we have been doing through Endurus so far, and what we are paying, and the types of coverage that we have had through Endurus, we have provided that to them. He has also been in contact with Cheryl Brandt from Endurus, and the three of us have been working together. We are hoping, he says at this point in time, they have several insurance companies that are very, very interested in us, and the only thing that had come back that they had asking for was a letter from us mitigating what we have done to mitigate risks that we have faced in the past. I provided that to them, they were very happy with it, and they're going to continue to move forward with this, and then notify us when they have companies, I've told them we need at least three bids. They are hoping to have as many as six for us to look at.
Well, we have those in July.
He, I was hoping to have them in July, he says he will have them for sure by the end of July, beginning of August, because he understands that we are at an August 31st time.
It would be nice to have them, can you, can you please stress to him that if at all possible, we'd like to have them before our regular scheduling board meeting in July?
So July 16th, yes, I will-
Thank you.
-communicate with him again.
And if we can't, but we really would like that.
He knows our time crunch, for sure.
Okay.
I've reiterated that to him a couple of times.
Just, I just had a question about, well, it's not really a question now, it's just one of the things I know that I will be looking to understand, hopefully it's part of the quote, but for example, right now, we use MRSC, and I would really love to be aware of, based in these quotes, is that still a tool for us, or is there a similar tool?
I did, I did ask for that when he and I had a conversation.
Okay.
I said that we were enjoying the benefits of MRSC and would like to see something the same or similar-
Okay, super.
-in future policy.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Cece, what's your?
Okay, I have a question before we go forward. The $6,500 quote, is that, is that going to be one of those if we were to go forward with this?
It's already in the budget we just approved.
But my question is, do we have, do we have to have more than one estimate on that?
No.
What is the limit? Help me out.
They're the only guy in town that does this.
It's a sole, sole source justification.
Why move that we go forward with the process of purchasing a programming system to control the pool deck temperature in the amount of $6,500?
We have a motion.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I don't think we need this.
I don't think we need a motion, because they're a sole source.
Okay.
We can, we can definitely move on the motion if you want to.
Well, I'll let it die. There you go. Kill it.
You're going to retract the motion?
I retract that motion.
Boom.
With that said, I want to move that we look at raising the pool temperature to the nominal temperature being 83 degrees, that is the target temperature, 83 degrees.
Okay, do I have a second?
I will second that.
Discussion.
I personally would like to wait to have this discussion when Commissioner Hawley is also back, personally.
And I'd also like to say, I'd like to wait and see, I don't get to vote unless you both tie, but I, my comment on that, I would like to see the results of the ambient air temperature being steady before we move on to water temperature, because I think the direct result there, that the balance there may actually, at 80, if we could keep the pool temperature at 82, with our ambient air temperature the same. Maybe 82 will be good, maybe it won't, but that's all I'm going to say.
The only thing I would bring up, Sean, is that when the system was working properly, when Director Walker was here, that 82 degrees was still an issue then.
That's true.
And that this is something that we've been talking about for over two years, that's my only point.
No, that's a good point. Further discussion? All in favor of raising the pool temperature to 83 degrees? All against raising the temperature to 82, 83 degrees?
I'm going to go with a nay, based on the reasoning that I shared.
Okay, for roll call vote, since it wasn't unanimous. Commissioner, Commissioner Hofmeyer, you vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Singleton, you vote.
Nay.
And the chair is going to vote nay, and ask that we also bring this up at next month's meeting.
Thank you.
Agreed, yeah, yeah.
All right, no, thank you.